Board of Commissioners meeting together for August 11th, special meeting, Buck Creek, Colorado.
Commissioner Roach.
Here.
Commissioner Haynes.
Here.
Commissioner Bowers.
Here.
Commissioner Henn. Mayor May.
Um, yes, here, President.
I move we accept the resignation of Commissioner Eddie Henn.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bowers, so let me ask Commissioner Roach, any discussion? Buck Creek, Colorado.
Commissioner Roach.
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Commissioner Henn. Mayor May.
Yes.
Mayor, and I have a suggestion before we go into closed session.
Okay.
If we could talk about the process for just a minute, I don't think we can talk about process in closed session, but if you would have a recommendation to us, I would like to treat this like we treat board appointments, if you have one. If you don't.
I can do that.
If you could come up with one.
I can, I can, um, I have nine or 10 people.
Me too.
Call me. Uh, the first person that called, I would be comfortable with her, her name is Dawn Hale. She is on Plant Board, Sewer Board, South Hartford Neighborhood Association, Ethics Chair, most recently, uh, Human Rights Commissioner, I think it was. So I would nominate her.
Well, I would move that we accept your nomination.
We're gonna talk about names and people, I'd like to do that in executive session if we could.
Okay.
And as far as process.
The reason that I'm saying that process is because, um, I got several calls and I referred them to the mayor. I figured the mayor is like the head of the board and I funnelled all those to him. Um, and even said, send them a resume, because that's the way I think he does board appointments. And so therefore, I think he's in a better position to know all of the people that are interested, more so than I am. Um, so I guess that's the reason I'm recommending that process.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, um, forgot, I had a motion in a second, so I wasn't supposed to really...
So I guess, can I move that we handle this board appointment in that way?
Did you not second it?
I didn't second that.
That's not the way the statute provides. That's not the way it's supposed to be. The statute provides that the members, the remaining members of the commission vote to determine who the replacement is, which is different than the board appointment process.
I know that it's different.
But I'd be happy to make that nomination, if you want a second or if you don't go to closing.
Well, I guess first we would have to decide to vote to handle it that way, wouldn't we?
I make a motion that we go to closed session. Or maybe I can't make a motion because we have a motion on the floor.
Well, I was trying to figure out...
Sure. Okay, well...
Sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
So we have a motion, has there been a second motion?
Not to my knowledge, not to my ears.
It kept getting interrupted. I think the process is what we're having a problem with because, uh, she started off like a motion and said he would put it on the table, but...
I guess what I'm saying is, I would move that, um, the way we handle this is through the mayor making a recommendation and the board treating it like we do other appointments because it's, um, four months.
Commissioner, can I ask you?
Sure.
Could I ask you a question?
Sure.
I think we should follow what the process is, which is, I assume we'd go to executive session, we'd throw people out and try to come up with a consensus pick. I think this is different than a board appointment.
It is.
Because these are gonna be people that'll be our co-equal, in a sense, if you wanna use that phrase, making votes, et cetera, and so I think we probably should to try to, should, I've gotten a bunch of calls, you've gotten them, the mayor has, and I'm sure, I know Commissioner Haynes has, so I would think that we'd go into closed session and try to come up with somebody that we think, all of us think, would be really good.
How many have you gotten, Mayor?
Nine or 10.
Okay. How many did you get, Commissioner?
Oh, I probably hit six or seven, please.
Okay. Did you get some seats?
Six. Mayor, has the motion died for lack of second?
If anybody wanna make a second, I'll just put it...
Then I make a motion, we go into executive session. Pursuant to?
I need a second.
Pursuant to KRS 61.810.
Seven, one, seven. So, first name.
And Commissioner Haynes, second.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? No, Buck Creek, Colorado.
Commissioner Roach.
Yes.
Commissioner Haynes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowers.
Yes.
Mayor May.
Yes.
Oh, are you okay?
Oh, it's just a bruise.
Do you have a bruise? That hurts. Get turned it off.
Yes, I am. What did you write?
We're gonna be... I'm going to let the party... We can, if we need to, we'll go on the other end. Okay, um, since most people came here for the pool issue, um, is there, so who's gonna make that? Jim Harris, Jim McCarty? Do you want to start off?
Citizen comments.
Are we ready?
Citizen comments.
Oh, sorry, citizen comments.
Yeah.
We had, Mr. Citizen Comments.
Yes, sir.
Listen.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, my name's Donna Hecker, I'm here with Walk by Frankfurt, and I just wanted to ask the city if it would help us get the word out that the River View Trail is currently impassable from all time mile tire and to public trace until the construction work on the whole piece gets finished. It's only impassable, it's actually kind of dangerous, and each week people contact me to let me know that they tried to use it in my facility, so, thank you, Major Abrams, for your giving the word out on that. So I think the help you offer would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Donna.
Did you get your hand down?
I don't know if this is the right time, or should I wait for the discussion on the agenda?
What is it?
I had a question about 7.5, and...
Go ahead.
Under the background, unless written permission is provided, Franklin County Fire Department and Franklin County Sheriff's Office will only access the boat ramp during normal working hours. Well, normal working hours for the sheriff's office and the fire department's 24/7, and if it's anything like 24/7, I think it needs to be stated in there.
Mr. Mayor, it's the city sewer department's normal working hours.
Okay, is that in there? I guess...
No, it just says during normal working hours.
So do we need to type something else?
Just add a word.
Yes, we could do it. Normal working hours at Sewer.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else under citizen comments? Are you all here for the pool?
Here.
Yeah, one's waiting.
Okay. Um, then we will, once we get out of citizen comments, we'll go straight into the family, go ahead.
Oh, I'd just like to point out that the contract specifically says, the memorandum of agreement between the city of Franklin and Franklin County Fiscal Court specifically says, uh, through the sewer plant during normal working hours, 8:00 a.m. until 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, so it's, I think it's sufficiently...
I figured it was...
And you, I don't think you were able to see that, Mr....
No, she just had the...
No, I don't think she did, so I have to keep going back there.
Okay. Do, um, Jim McCarty and Jim Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. We're here to discuss the family aquatic center, the plan revisions, and the budget reductions that we've done. I'd like to introduce too that Ann French Thomas, chairman of the Park Board chair, Polly Coughlin, and Alan Smith, our water quality specialists who take care of our, when we have public pools for over 25 years. So we're here to discuss anything, and I'm gonna kinda turn it over, any questions or anything you all have. We have our architects from Branford or Carroll, we have Mike Carroll, and Pat Holman here. You all have been provided packets and some different things on some revisions, and we'll be glad to discuss and answer any questions. I think I'm gonna let Mike give a little synopsis of what's been done.
Okay. Take all these. What you, what you've got, as you're aware, what we've been doing since we took bids on the project, when the bids came in, over the estimated cost that we've projected, uh, what we've been doing is working with the contractor and revising plans and making revisions to the documents in order to get it, to get it, the scope reduced significantly for the project. If, looking at the document in front of you, the base bid for this project, the way it came in with including the alternate bids for the spray ground, the lazy river, and the eight lane competition pool was $6,632,000. And what we've got listed below that, there is the revisions that we have made to the project, to the drawings, and in rebidding some subsections with the contractor to subcontractors, we've been able to reduce it to $5,743,000. So it's just, we've taken about a million dollars out of the project, and what I wanted to do was to, what our goal for this process of reworking the project has been to maintain the project in its original intent. And I think, I think we've been able to do that so that we have a pool house, we have an eight lane competition pool, we've got a great water slide, we've got the plunge pool and the slide for that, we've got the lazy river, we've got the spray ground, we've got all of the content of what we originally tried to build out there. What we've, what we've, what we've lost probably is just some of the bells and whistles, which is probably why the thing is over budget, because we went a little bit far in trying to do some of that stuff. But if it's okay, I'd like to go through these items with you, or would you rather just ask questions about it? So, how much?
Might as well just go through them.
Okay, okay. The first, the first two items are kinda hand in hand with sidewalk and deck reduction and retaining wall reduction, including the rails. What we've done is we've eliminated some, some of the massive amounts of concrete, we've made it, we've turned it into grass. We still have a significant concrete deck of about 15,000 square feet out there, but we've been able to eliminate about 10,000 square feet of it. And the other thing that has helped us do is to, and you may have heard at one point in time that there was a concern about whether there was enough restrooms on this site, and that allows us to meet the requirement without having to receive a variance from anybody in order to move forward from the plan review. The revisions to the pool house structure is, is only in the central entrance element. We had a large tower going in the building between the two buildings that we have, and we've reduced that to be a fabric type structure. Item four is reusing the, reutilizing existing filter building location. We are still building a new filter building that, on site. What we're doing is we're making it fit in the existing hole so we don't have to remove any rock to get, it's just a little different shape, but that was a $40,000 savings in order to do that. Uh, we're using plywood soffits and blue of the cedar slats. Uh, the demolition comes from not having to, to remove as much of the, of the old filter building, because we're reusing one of the walls. And the next four items are items that the Parks and Recreation Department can provide, which is the seating and the sodding, the signage, it's like furnishings. The last item is the, is the tap fee and the meter fee. This was a big number that the contractor had in his bid because they didn't really know what the tap fees were going to be, so they just guessed wildly, and in this case they guessed $92,000, and it won't be anywhere near that large, so that's good, it's good for us because it's money we can just take out of the, take out of the project. Eleven, eleven, twelve are both items that we amended to the bath house again, just trying, they don't change the pool house in terms of content, restrooms or concession areas, they're just outside trimmings on, on the outside of the building. Uh, item 13 is reducing the waterfall in the bridge, bridge at the plunge pool. We had a, a rock type, we, we have a river theme for the, for the facility, and we're trying to carry water from the plunge pool down to the other pool with, and have native rocks out there and have water running through there, it was just a nice feature. We've just agreed to reduce that in scope and not be as big as what it originally was designed for. Items 14 and 15 are tied together also, we had, we had some features on the lazy river. Basically, we've cut that number in half. The waterfall, that's on item 15, we are going to make that the focus of the money that we have left in item 14, so we will have about $35,000 left to put sprays and things on the waterfall to make that attractive. Uh, the infinity edge of the activity pool was, again, a nice feature, that down at the end of the activity pool, that is going to be gone, and I liked it a lot, but the reality is when you're there, nobody will know it was ever intended to be there, it won't make any difference. Uh, we're replacing the three meter board with the one meter board, which was actually what we were, what we were, we should have been doing anyway, was having two one meter boards on there. The lazy river filter and pump reduction, it's actually a small thing, but we were able to get a better price from a different manufacturer on that. Same way with, or actually, the next item is to reduce site lighting. We're not intending to have the pool open at light, at night, we're able to reduce the number of light poles we had out on the deck, they're there for security only, so we've still got four, I can't remember, four or five poles left. We, I think we got four poles left out there with lights around the perimeter, just to light the place up at night. Item 20 is some asphalt milling that we were doing up by the top edge of the, of the pool house. We're going to remove the milling, just do an overlay and direct water out that way, but we still have the drop off lane of the concrete curbs we had asked for, the park board asked for the light, to bring a bus in and park buses, because people commute in buses, we've still got that in the project. And, uh, item 21 is sales tax savings, and this probably requires more mon, more explanation, but we do, we do, actually do this quite commonly where the city will pay directly for purchases of equipment in order not to pay sales tax. The, the important thing about this, the documents are set up so that you're not responsible, even though you're paying directly for it, we won't have any issues with the contractor getting something and it's broken, and he says, hey, you bought it, that's not the case, he's still responsible for getting it, accepting delivery, unloading it, directing, warranties, all of that still remains in the contractor's pocket, all you are doing is paying directly for it. And, and that was, again, a substantial savings. And the last item is, uh, lighting manufacturer, we just went back to the electrical contractor, and, and again, it's a different brand of manufacturing, it's, it's a different lighting house, uh, lighting, sales rep is providing fixtures, and so that's a five or $6,000 saving, but it's the same equivalent fixture, so again, there's nothing, nothing's really changed. So with those changes in mind, I think you can see we've got the same complex that we were trying to deliver for a million dollars less. Are there any questions? Press ready, Jim.
Yeah, I guess, I have a, I know some of it, but maybe you can give me a fuller explanation. How did we miss it so much? Because we missed it about 20 to 25 percent, and that's unusually high.
It's unusually high, I would grant you that.
And I'm sure you all don't do that very often.
No, no. And I don't mean, I don't mean to laugh, it's not, it's, it's embarrassment for me is what it is, because we missed it so badly. It's, I think it's, there's two factors. One is we went, we, we, and it's our fault, we're guilty, we went overboard on trying to provide a, a, a lot of the amenities, like I said, the, the waterfalls and some of that stuff, we probably didn't, well, I know we didn't price it as well as, as what we, was what we should have. And I think the other thing that we're, that's happened to this project, and we're seeing this on other projects, because we're, our construction industry is coming out of the recession finally, and we are looking at rapidly escalating construction prices. Uh, I, if you had been able to bid this two years ago, I'm willing to bet you got the whole thing for the budget we were in. I mean, we're, we're looking at buildings now that we were, that we were estimating at $185 to $195 a year ago, we're now estimating $225 to $230. It's gone up that much. So I think it's, I think it's a combination of those.
We're finding the same thing in my business as well.
If you talk to anybody who's in construction, that's, that's what's happening right now.
And they're all getting busier. You're not sharpening as much too. And there's less contractors than there used to be, a lot of went out of business. They're in the recession.
I just have a quick question, uh, because I see the reduction here, and first of all, thanks for getting those reductions, because, you know, we needed that million dollars. Uh, but I don't know which one to go with, because this draft is, is August the 9th, and this one's August 11th, and I don't see the bottom line number of this on here, so I'm wondering if these, this has not been updated?
That's your spreadsheet.
Those are estimates from last week.
Was that sent out by Steve, Dave?
Yeah. Yeah, estimates from, actually, last Friday, just estimates that you guys have put together.
So this is more accurate?
Yeah. They just got these today, hello?
Yeah, that's correct.
They just got these today.
We finalized this today about 3:30.
Yeah, okay. That's all I wanted to know, because I just wanna make sure when people are cornering me at Walmart, that I'm giving pretty good number.
This is the number we're dealing with right here.
Thank you.
And on the plan that you've got there, you'll see that, you know, some things moved, like the spray ground was down here to the right of the bath house, now it's over to the left. Something, we looked at ways that we could reduce the pavement, uh, and actually, as we were working with staff, it probably will work better in the log room, the other location anyway.
Jim, any further? Commissioner Bowers?
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to...
Is this for any of them, Jim?
Sure.
Okay. Um, the, as far as the, what's our, if we approve it now or close to now, or can we still have it ready in time?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, the contract is still written for June 1st opening this year.
Do we, do we have liquidated damages in case they don't meet the deadline?
We have a $500 a day liquidated damage clause.
Is that enough? Only ask that because you know what kind, we're gonna be facing.
It's, it's, it's a balancing with liquidated damages, if you make them too high, you scare contractors with a ladder stain, and so you just try to, you know...
Because that's not a lot.
It's, it's not a lot, but if you, if it went two weeks, that's $7,000, you, you probably wouldn't make $7,000 in that time period, you know, I don't, and that's, that's really what, in this case, because you have an income stream that you're paying, you can actually, if you don't have a, an income stream, liquidated damages really can't be forced in court of law, if you actually try to go after them. In this case, it does affect the income of the city because you are taking admissions out there. It's, you know...
We're just trying to avoid half of Frankfurt thinking we're crazy, because we don't have a pool open when it's summer.
Yeah, we won't get lucky enough to have a lousy summer like this, next year it'll be...
I hope it's real warm next summer.
It'll be 85 degrees on June 1st next year, yes. Yeah, but, you know, it's, 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 there's no scientific way to pick that number.
Is, is there a, what are the, so I'm a little nervous about the overrun, the initial one, and I'm thankful for what you all whittled down. What are the, what's the likelihood of future, of more cost overruns?
I don't, I'm, I'm not concerned about overrun, the only concern I have about overrun is getting out of the ground. I mean, you know, we know we've got rock out there, and we've got, we've got soil and borings, we've done drilling, we know where it is, we identified where it is. We have fit, actually, as I mentioned about the filter building, we fit the filter building into the pole that was already cut to the rock where the old filter building is. We've done the same thing with the pool, we've fit the deepest part of the pools into the location of the old pool in order to make it fit in there and not have to do rock excavation things. So we were diligent about that at the beginning, and the lazy river is shallow, we're not in rock there, the plunge pool is shallow, so we're not in rock there. So, you know, I'm not looking, you know, we're going to have some rock removal, but that's, that's in the documents right now. The only thing is if we have, we just find something underground that we don't know about. Once we get out of the ground, I'm, I'm not concerned about anything, but we've done, we've done enough pools that, and we've got, we've got a decent contractor, we've got an excellent pool contractor, we've done a lot of work with, so I'm, I'm comfortable once we're out of the ground.
Um, the, what's, I'd ask the gyms if you could let me know again, what's the, what are, what's our potential from A to B when the pool would be open, in the best possible circumstances? Because obviously, this first summer may not be that.
Memorial weekend to when school starts session, and a lot of that's, you know, when the kids go back to school, plus that's a lot of the labor force. And then staying open on the weekends while school is till Labor Day, but also having the party room and all that, that will be for rent year round. And the splash pad area, usually it can be opened earlier if it's warm enough, like middle or early May, to the end of September, and go along with the party time, when you rent the party room, you get the splash pad too.
Because you don't have lifeguards for the splash pad.
What about like, did we ever do like, uh, private parties to rent, like after close hours?
There will be private party, yes.
Like after the closing hours?
We rent twice a night at Juniper, seven nights a week, and it stays booked. Now, there'll probably be one here, because we'll stay open longer to the public, the guests, they'll be, it'll, it'll run just like the other one, it'll start at 6:30 in the morning with the swim teams and aerobics, Stewart Home School, and, uh, all that, and then it'll go right through the day with the public, and then there'll be private rental at night. So it'll, it'll run from about 6:30 a.m. to 9 o'clock or 9:15 daily, other than Sundays, we open a little later.
Based on the charts that we got, the Excel spreadsheets that we got, the, it gave us a couple of things where if you didn't do it, it would cost X, like, um, but this, which you've given us here, it doesn't take the slide out or the splash pad out, correct? Okay.
It keeps the whole integrity of every...
And is it, is it your view that since we've gotten the price down this much, that it would, might be penny wise and pound foolish to take the slide and the splash pad out, or not?
Yes, sir. Uh, the amenities are what people are gonna come for. We, we did the reductions mainly bricks, mortar, mechanical, that type of thing, you know, you probably never would know if we did that, honestly, to not hurt any of the integrity of the project.
So then the, the, um, financial question, where's, the financial question then becomes, if the commission supports it, what's the wisest course? Is it wiser to bond a greater amount, or is it wiser to put a greater amount down? Is that what the question is? And I've got the spreadsheet.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would be a lower number based on this number that we just got?
Kind of where we were coming from on that spreadsheet, you know, I did it several different ways, if we, if we take a half million dollars out of our, our reserve, we bond the rest, or if we go, you know, if we go up to, say, a million dollars out of reserve, but, like I said, you know, we're not earning a great deal of money right now, the interest rates are so low, that, that our feeling was, you know, probably trying to, you know, take a little more out of our reserve, because we're not, we're not earning any money off that, off that money, and our reserves are still gonna be strong, even if, you know, we took a million dollars out of the, you know, out of the reserve. So that first initial spreadsheet, the one I sent initially, says, uh, draft on it.
Right, which, and that...
That's kinda where we were coming from.
And we'd only have a, a cost if things all worked out really well, $28,000. I guess that would...
Yeah, that's a net, you know, that's how much we net saved after we did our reductions, and we applied that toward the, you know, the bond payment.
So basically, it would pay for itself if things work well?
Yeah.
And, really...
We, we've got enough in our overhead cost of savings to pay the bond payment.
That's what I think.
Yeah.
Okay, well then, um...
Either way, we can make either scenario work, but...
Well, I guess then, I guess the only other thing I have, two other things really quick, is the, I've been asked this by other people, so this don't, this may be a dumb question, I don't think it is. I think you all looked at several sites, right? What, what led us to settle on this site?
You want to say?
I think it's obvious, but I'm asking anyway.
Well, one of the reasons on this site is we already had parking, we had the infrastructure there, all your water, gas, sewer, electric, and all that, were already there, so that, you know, if we went to another site, we virtually have a lot of the same costs, plus be built in the parking lot, plus having to be running gas, water, electric.
Plus, your offices are there.
And we had a lot of facilities there, 180 golf courts, we had four tennis courts, two sand volleyball courts, a nice playground, so that, you know, that, that just adds to the facility, you've got other things for people to do, it brings people to the pool.
Okay, well then, the last thing I got is, I appreciate everybody answering those questions, thank you. Last thing I think, I have, I guess, is a comment, which is, you know, I think we should proceed, I think we should go with the, um, not dropping these big things, like you all said, because I think that would... big things like you all said, because I think that would take away from it. And I believe it's wiser, one of the few times I wouldn't agree with Steve, which isn't very often, I think it's wiser to put a lower amount down and 500,000 and bond the rest. I realize that we don't get much money on our money, but there's still a lot of intangibles out there, I think, that might hit us. We're going to depend on what we might do with stormwater in the future or other things in the future. So I'd rather have more money and, and pay that rate even though it, there is a, there is a difference. But over a 25-year period of time, the way our government spends money at the national level, I'm fairly confident that we'll be getting a whole lot more than a half a percentage on our money when inflation takes off. So I think locking in for the most we can, for the longest we can, so that, so that a long period of time, people pay for it rather than everybody paying for it at once makes the most sense. But I appreciate everything everybody's done and your commissioners.
Thank you all for working to get this back under budget.
We, we needed to do that. I appreciate you saying thanks.
One, one other thing too. I want to, I know Bill's not here tonight, but Bob's here, but the Sewer Department has agreed to let us use a large pile of fill down at the plant. We, you know, we need fill to, which is such a substantial savings too. And we want to thank the Sewer Department for that, for that, where they dug out the new reservoir. There's a pile of fill there.
I just want to thank everybody involved with the project. Parks Board members have been involved. Steve Dawson has put a lot of input into this. You know, when you've got a finance director that's willing to give up a million dollars, right, that's pretty good.
He's a good guy.
And city manager, city manager also. It's been a good project. You know, really, when you get a team after everybody in the city government, you can get a lot of things done.
Particularly when it doesn't cost very much every year because of the things we did. That makes it pretty easy.
And our architect has worked in the buildings and bring the sunbacks back in. We feel like we do have two correct contractors, indeed, Wilters and Astro Tools to pull this off.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. And again, thanks to all the staff that have worked on this. Our Parks Board has worked for a number of years on looking at recreation centers for the community. Many of us have looked at indoor facilities, outdoor facilities. I think the majority of the board, I believe, still supports looking at an indoor recreation facility to some degree. The problem with this is people, you'll not have a pool next year if we didn't move forward with this particular project. We could obviously scale it back to just let it be a pool and then put other money into possible indoor center. But even if we put $6 million on the table tonight, there's still factors that would require the county to come up with about six or more. And then the state is going to have to kick in and there's, my indications from talking to state legislative leaders and others in the executive branch was that there was not going to be money available during this period of time while the pension system was underfunded, education was underfunded and many other issues. So the commission was faced with making a decision of waiting for possibilities that may not happen or to come up with a solution to keeping the pool open or a pool open in this community. So that's the, that's what's on the table for the commission and, and I agree, we need to move forward or we won't have a pool next year. And I think the commission's on record as supporting continuing to look at funding and possibilities for indoor recreation center. And I believe the Parks Board is too. So I would like to get that on the record because somehow some folks are, are missing that, misinterpreting the actions of this board as a whole. And we just want to reassure everyone that indoor recreation facility is still on the table. And if we can partner with the county and the state to, any, any boss that wants to come to the table, we're absolutely, I thank everybody here and I don't want to, if I don't speak the right thing, correct me, I think we all support that. And we're on record as supporting that. And if anyone has questions, please call us and ask us. We'd like to clarify that. And we're looking forward.
There's already been one meeting of the indoor committee with city, county, YMCA, state officials and everything. So the second meeting is on August 18th. So with the same architects that we're passing charges ahead, we're working toward that and come back before Christmas with a, with a plan on that also.
Okay, the city managers and staff are asking if we have a contract ready for the 18th. Should we put that on the agenda? And I think we could go ahead and put it on the agenda and if it's not ready.
It's ready.
And one thing too, just throwing out a thought, if, if we did construction management and put out bids for, I haven't talked to you, but construction managers, RFPs or, what do we say, RFP?
Yeah, our, we were asked for a request for a quote.
RFQs. And, and that would be separate from the architect firm?
For the pool?
For.
For the indoor center?
Uh, both. Just, just.
Well, it, it's too late for the pool because.
Okay.
Yeah, you could, yeah. We've got a general contractor lined up together. But if you wanted to for the indoor center, that's, you know, that's your option.
Okay. I just wanted to throw that out as a way to try to manage costs overruns.
We've already got some.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all so very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
National Guard Memorial contribution.
I like the title.
Yeah. I was asked.
I know it went like that.
Thank you. And I've received, and we've shared that with the commission, requesting.
Yeah, I got one in here somewhere.
Funding for the National Guard Memorial. We've talked with our tourism folks and believe that tourism benefits would certainly be worth the city working with the National Guard Association and the National Guard on this memorial. And our former planning director, James Rogers, is here.
Where's it going to be?
It's at Boone Center, but we'll let Mr. Rogers sort of fill us in on details.
My name is Jimmy Rogers and I've been involved with the Kentucky National Guard Memorial since 2008 October. I retired from here 2006, so I soon found another job. But anyway, it's going to be located at the entrance to Boone Center. You turn in Boone Center, it'll be on the left. We have nice facility, floor print and the diameter of the floor print will be about 70 feet. The, the board will be an outline and granted at the State of Kentucky. It's 23 feet long. I've forgotten the height. There'll be a larger than life size Daniel Boone statue there. Be parking. Total cost is somewhere between 1.4 and 1.5 million dollars. And we put together, we're here to ask for your support, a little information sheet, some of the things that, we left the contract Friday, signed the contract. We hope to have it completed by January 2015. It's going to dedicate it to praying for next year. But there's still some remaining needs and that's why I'm here tonight to see if the city might give us a little support.
I will say.
Bring this project into reality.
Several other local governments have already committed.
And they're mentioned here in the handout.
Frank, can you get?
You've probably read about it in the newspapers. There've been several stories about the memorial. Hopefully there'll be some.
Disco Court, federal court, this court committed 15,000. So that was the request to match.
Did they commit it or they, they just donate? Do they actually did check?
It's in the bank.
Everybody sent that correct?
It's in the bank.
Yeah. Does anyone have questions for Mr. Rogers or comments?
Yeah, I definitely hope the city does contribute toward it. I, I didn't see what it was asking for us to match, but I guess that's been talked to some other ways.
We left it open. Certainly we would appreciate it.
Right. Because, you know, we haven't had the chance. We're going to talk to a bunch of persons to make sure, you know, we don't want to say something we can't do.
Well, he's kind of like Roger.
Right. But I do.
Tight fist.
I do walk by that area and that's a beautiful location. They provide a lot for the city and county. So I do hope that we make a contribution.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We expect to turn some dirt, I think, within 10 days. So if you pass by, you might watch the progress.
So what's, if we, if we determine this commission to give toward this, what's the process? Do we have to have a, will this be something in your voting meeting or is it, how would this be done?
You would have to vote to approve it, just like you.
Right. Just like anything else. So it would be in a voting meeting, correct?
Correct.
Oh, we do special, but I wouldn't really.
Okay.
We can still do it.
And you do have a voting meeting on the 18th. You wanted to be present at the groundbreaking.
You know, I, I am always nervous about benevolent cause contributions because you're taking, I think this is a good call. So, well, it'll take me a second to get there. I'm nervous about it because you're taking money from Joe Smith and giving it to somebody else that's not necessarily a city function. But I think if you have a, if you can make a strong enough case for economic development, that that's a stronger case. I'd like to see us kind of rethink how we do all of this, but that may be a naive hope. But I think that given the economic activity that the National Guard gives to this community, that we need to give. And so I'm along with Commissioner Hanks on that. And I'd just say, let's go ahead and put it on the, the voting session and make it $15,000 and roll on.
We've identified 228 names already.
228 names?
Mm-hmm. That's back to 1912 or, and I'm certain of being pretty meaningful.
And we did talk about the tourism, like Commissioner said, the tourism impact from folks coming to, to pay honor, respect to fallen soldiers.
They got a lot of jobs here.
So there's no objections, then it'll be on the 18th?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next time, garbage collection fee percentage. I'm sorry. Skip down to the alcohol ordinance changes. There's objections. So is, they're going to come under?
Steve or Roger?
Mr. Dawson. Well, that's why I think it's, Mr. Dawson, Steve Dawson's been designated as a local alcoholic beverage administrator.
Well, I can address the changes and then if there are details, Steve and I can provide the answers. But what, what has been done is that what we propose to do is to amend the alcoholic beverage control ordinance to add additional licenses to, to the city's licensing program. For example, we're adding a micro brewer, brewer's license and we're adding licenses in accordance with the state's revised licensing system that was passed by statute last year. And those licenses really are just, we're trying to be consistent with the state. Allow people the opportunity to sell the alcoholic beverages that the state will allow were applicable. The other change that's made is to set forth in a separate section, the prohibition against the sale of alcoholic beverages while the poles are open. And we're setting it forth in a separate section for two reasons. One is so that it's clear, you know, it's kind of hidden in a provision right now. And that wasn't a big deal before because state law didn't allow it. But now the state law does allow the poles to be open when alcoholic beverages are to be sold unless the city or, or local government provides. Otherwise, we felt like it makes sense to separate it out so that it's easy to find. And then also, there'll be no question as to the fact that it has been, I guess, re-promulgated, for lack of a better term, by the commission so that everybody knows that that is currently available.
Do you have any questions? I do. I have some, but I want to, the commissioner go first.
Why don't you go first?
Okay. I will go first for change. Didn't see anybody really, what about the section? Because I was asked questions about, questions about if someone has a facility that's less than 100 seats. The current statute now is 100 seats and the organization of the establishment corners, 50% or more in food sales.
We did not change those provisions.
I was going to ask a quick, can, so if someone that has 50 seats, would that be something they would need to go to the ABC and request because their license would have already been issued through the ABC? Or is that done at the local level?
My understanding, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you would have to comply with both the state regulations and also with the city ordinance. So they'd have to get a license from both?
Yes, yes. Typically what happens, they go to state board first, get their paperwork and then they come here and we get a license, you know, based on approval from the state.
But what about the city ordinance? Does it, city ordinance allow that or prohibit it?
The, we did revise the city ordinance several years ago to authorize the sale of alcoholic beverages where they were being sold in connection with a restaurant or a and.
For food only, right? They get 50% of their food sale, sales from revenue from food.
Right. Let me see if I can tap that real quick.
That's a Sunday ordinance, wasn't it?
Well, I was just thinking, I was thinking in general, I was asked that question and I didn't know the answer to it. So I said I would ask tonight. And if we need to move forward, let's just, while you're looking at that, just let the, let the commissioners ask. And then we can also, I can just submit those in writing to the city attorney or have the folks that are asking me the questions to the cemetery and I'll just forward them to. Well, we, normally we do the questions from constituents in the citizen comment section. So we've moved past that. That's why I was asking if anyone had any other questions under citizen comments. And so we didn't, so we closed that out. So what we, our commission rules don't allow us to take questions and comments while we're in this deliberation part of our agenda. So, I mean, did you have some questions that you were going to ask about that? Because.
I apologize not being at the right part of the meeting, but I wasn't sure if this was a part rush to ask to speak or not. I mean, this person being a bench.
And that's your first time. Well, I'll tell you what we'll do. Let me dispose of this and then if the commission wants to go back into citizen comments later, we can, we can see if they would be.
Like the end of the meeting or?
At some point. And I'm sure they probably will. And we're going to do the same thing?
Yes.
Okay. That's okay.
I found that section when you're ready, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
If you look at section 115.09.
You're talking about our ordinance?
Our ordinance, right. 115.09 A1.
115.09 A1.
Right. The ordinance provides that restaurants which have been granted all appropriate licenses for the sale of distilled spirits, beer, malt beverage or wine by the drink, and which receive at least 50% or more of their gross annual income from the sale of food, may remain open and shall be permitted to sell distilled spirits, beer or malt beverages and wine by the drink on Sundays from 1:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. And then that's, and we basically have the same rule for hotels and motels. With A2 provides hotels or motels which have dining facilities and which have been granted all appropriate licenses for the sale of distilled spirits, beer, malt beverage or wine by the drink, and which receive at least 50% or more of their gross annual income from the dining facilities from the sale of food, may remain open and shall be permitted to sell distilled spirits, beer or malt beverages and wine by the drink. sell distilled spirits, beer, or malt beverages and wine by the drink on Sundays from 1:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. prevailing time.
Okay. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I guess it's Chief Wilford. Come on in. Just...
Chief trying to coast.
You got another chief in here. I figured you're kind of that, Joe. Just a few more amendments. August 31st?
14, but two's counting.
Just, I need a little help on this. The state has historically, until they've just changed it, had the prohibition on selling alcohol when the polls were open. The reason being is people used alcohol to buy votes. And, well, they did. So my question is, and that's is, as we've had constituents, and I'm sure I'm not the only person, ask about, you know, whether or not that we should keep that prohibition, of which we have. To what degree is that still a problem?
I could only give you a personal opinion. As far as the numbers go, I mean, I haven't run any numbers, you know, Tuesday in May versus, you know, every other Tuesday in the year. But I would expect that it would not be much of a problem here. We're already selling in spots seven days a week anyway, if you know where to go. I mean, you get drinks on Sunday in a restaurant. I haven't heard of any... Of course, it's mostly the Attorney General's office and the sheriff's office that takes care of the voting violations, but I haven't heard of any points for votes here.
And that's... And it's been... A lot of other places. I just haven't heard about much here.
I haven't heard of that personally. So, like I say, it would be my personal opinion. My personal opinion would be it wouldn't be any different than any other Tuesday or any other day that workers might have off that they have access to alcohol.
Okay. So am I right in thinking that the primary reason why we don't have it is because of corruption?
Potential corruption.
For the city? We just didn't know... We just didn't... We just hadn't changed the city ordinance update with the state statute. Because I think it wasn't necessarily made... I don't want to say made clear, but it's just something that wasn't brought to our attention maybe?
Well, we've had that prohibition. You know, this ordinance...
It's been in place.
With various amendments, has been in place since 1970.
Could I just follow up a question to that?
Sure.
In most cases, do we not follow what the state has put out? Is this one of the few things that we are... I know the state just changed. On other areas, do we normally follow what the state does?
I would say you'd have to look at that on a case-by-case basis. I would say many times we would follow what the state does, but not every time.
Not every time.
Mayor probably has more experience in that than I do.
It's like the city attorney said, it's case-by-case. This was one that just... The state changed it. And a lot of cities and other local governments just had not caught up with making a change to reflect what the state long changed. Because the state statute didn't make it mandatory, it just made it a discretion.
Well, it seems to me that... Very interested in what everybody else thinks. Because I'm just conjecture, but it seems to me that if you believe that it will deter vote buying and things of that nature, then it's a good ordinance. If you don't believe that it will, and it will have a very little to no effect, then it's not a good ordinance. Now, have I missed something?
I just thought we wanted sober people in the polls.
And that's part of what I'm talking about. And that would be the other part. If you think it would impair people's voting ability or would lead to corruption or vote buying, then I think it's a good ordinance. You know, and that's why I'm asking to see what everybody thinks.
I don't... I can't... I mean, I don't know, but my opinion would be the same as the chief's. I just can't imagine people buying votes with alcohol here in Franklin County. Maybe it happens, but I don't know. But I wouldn't think it would be.
Well, it used to happen all the time. My great uncle used to buy votes all the time in Frankfurt. So it's not been that long. And Jefferson County in the 90s, that helped sway the governor's race. But I've never known much anything around here lately. That's why I'm asking.
I don't think the cases have been... When the Attorney General's office has kept the cases in the voter fraud hotline, I don't think Franklin County has had any cases pop out where they elect alcohol involved that I'm aware of. That doesn't mean it hasn't. It's not something that I've ever heard about here. I have heard about it in other parts of the state. I don't know that we've had any vote... A lot of voter fraud cases reported here.
Not that I can specifically recall.
I think we would have read about those. That's... I mean, that usually makes the newspaper. Or other media outlets. Not just like the news... I mean, the TV or radio outlets. Okay. Does anybody else have any questions on this ordinance?
Well, I'm fine with allowing them to, since they're new to this. However you want to do it, Mayor.
Okay. Is there no objection that will allow some comment? And we do have like a five-minute rule. Which, you know, I don't think you'll go that long, but just state your... You don't have to give your address, but just state your name.
No problem. I appreciate you giving me the chance to talk. My name is John Earl. I own three liquor stores in this county. One is in the county, two are in the city.
Did you say John Earl?
Yes. J-A-R-L. It's like a first name. And the county, it is legal to be open on Election Day. The city is not. In all past years, when it was across statewide, not available for sale, at 6 o'clock, 90% of the liquor stores had a rush because of them available as soon as the polls close. This year, two of my stores are in the city, did a third of the business they do on a normal day, had no rush whatsoever at 6 o'clock. That's an economic loss to the city. Why? People went to the county. And all the people in the city can go to the county, get their same liquor, they can buy, they can talk about buying votes, they can do that, bring it back into the city. Nothing to stop them. This is a law that had good merit to it when it was issued, but now that it's passed, it's not fair to let some people sell in this county and other people not sell in the county at the same time. If you want to ban sales completely in the county, then it's fair. Don't pick and choose. It's not fair. That's my problem with it. And if you have any questions about sales or whatever that you'd like to ask, I'll be glad to try to answer for you.
And that's a good... Tom, that's a good point because we didn't know that this just went into effect this year, so we did not know that the county had changed. So thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I appreciate it. I'm sorry I was out of time.
Oh, that's okay.
I will do better next time, but I will be back.
No, that's okay. You know, I didn't make that clear like I do in the big meetings.
Well, I'm sorry. I said, I apologize, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Please don't feel bad.
This is my first time I've ever done this. I've seen it on television, but here on hand.
And you came anyway.
Yes. My name is Kathy Wade, and I'm here to discuss my sewer bill. Recently, my husband and I, we just built a house, and I got a sewer bill that was $1,587.99 for usage between June 15th and July 15th. And I'm here because the water that we use did not go into the sewer. We put sod on our yard, and the water did not go into the sewer. And we didn't plan to put sod on our yard, but due to numerous complaints in our neighborhood, the mud was getting in front of people's houses, people's driveways, and every time they come in and out, they would get mud on their clean vehicles. So we thought we were doing the responsible thing, put sod down. And Tony Smith, who is the president of the Neighborhood Association, he came over to my house and told me that he had gotten several phone calls and complaints because of the runoff from the new construction. So the first thing we did was we bought some water hoses and we cleaned the street off. And we also put some hay bales down to keep the runoff from going into the road from the rain. But what happened was, when we got the next rain on June the 4th, the rain actually moved some of the hay bales, and it just rerouted around and went down the street again. So it took two men, six hours to clean the street. And so I decided to get sod because of all the problems trying to be a good neighbor in a new neighborhood, was making enemies, I felt like, very quickly, and I hadn't even moved in yet. So I had the sod laid by Turf Farms on June 15th, and the temperature that day was 90 degrees. And all that whole week it was low 90s, high 80s. And when I got there, the guy called me to... I need to water my yard 24/7. And so that's what I did. But the next day, I called the Frankfort Plateboard and asked them, you know, what can I do? I'm just using the water. I'm not... It's not... I'm not using the sewer. It's going down into the ground. And they said, well, you would have to get a meter, and it would cost $500, and would have to be approved by the board. I said, well, by that time, my sod would be dead. So I just went on and kept watering. So on Monday, after my sod was laid on Thursday, I noticed some brown patches in my yard. So I called the sod company again, and they told me to keep watering my yard. And I said, okay, so that's what I did. And at that time, when we were building, we lived in some rental property, and I lived on the east side of town instead of the west side of town. So twice a day, when I was on the weekends even, I would come over to my property and move the sprinklers around. And so I got in my pocket there, I have a letter from Tony Smith, who's the president, complaints from my neighbors, and where we bought water hoses, we cleaned the street. I've got May, June, and July, when we had those torrential rains that would come down and wash out into the street. And so... And I have received from where I bought water sprinklers. And on Sunday, July 27th, we had significant rainfall in Frankfurt that day. And that day was like the most that we had all year in May, June, and July. And so the hay bales, we had two rows of hay bales that kept the water from going out into the street. And there was a little bit of muddy water, this colored water, but it wasn't mud. So what I'm asking or pleading, that my sewer bill be adjusted. My husband and I, do our best to be, do the right thing with our other neighbors in the neighborhood. And I just hope that you all would work with us, and I appreciate your time. And I do not know all your rules, part of the board. And I just want you to take this careful consideration of that sewer bill.
I guess what we'll have to do is let our staff review. So it'll take a bit. We can't make a decision now because we don't have enough information. And we don't vote on these work sessions anyway. So I guess our city manager tends this off. We'll work with our sewer department and city attorney to look at what our rules allow us to do in terms of...
Are there copies for everyone in here, or is it just one copy?
That was for Bob here.
It's for Bob here. Okay. Thank you. And we will... My city manager will probably be the one that will contact you before you go. If you have a... Is your telephone number and every contact information on there?
No, it is not.
Okay.
I give the...
Give it to me.
Okay. This is Kathy Wade. My telephone number is 395-2404.
502?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
They'll let us know. Feel free to contact any one of us if you need. Our information's on our website. Or you can call City Hall 875-8500.
Yeah. I called them last week. I think I've been on.
All right. Now, going back into... Finishing up on... More on the alcohol ordinance changes.
Is Donna still here?
Is that Hacker? Hacker, Ms. Hacker?
I don't see her. So is there any other changes on the alcohol ordinance?
I think the primary question, I'm very happy with how they've identified the different kinds of alcohol because that matches. I didn't know this in top red. The notes that we were going to stay with the ordinance that we had. And so that's the only part in there. It does seem like we're taking money out of Frankfurt. And then the county's right there, and we're also part of Franklin County. So I do... Plus, I think somebody spoke about that. I think it was Donna Hacker.
She did. That's why I wanted to ask before she left.
So it looked like we've already gotten past... You know, I didn't think we wanted to do that. We wanted to discuss that part. And I guess this is the discussion part, but if it goes over tonight, though, would that count as a first reading?
No, no, no. The first reading would be on the eighteenth.
No, I... You know, I thought we should keep it, the language that we had, but after hearing some things tonight and hearing from some people and finding out about the county doing it, I think we should go along and have the same language that the state has. That's just me. And it sounds like others may think that too. What do you think?
One comparison, it's not a perfect comparison, but on our fireworks ordinance. As you know, our fireworks ordinance is more stringent than the county's fireworks ordinance. So, you know, the... What you do is, the vendors sell in the county. Of course, they sell to city residents as well as others. So, you know, there is some revenue loss there. Of course, there may be a more direct connection to safety there. So in any event, you know, that's another one where we've gone the other... Where the city's gone the other way, been more stringent, and then people buy in the county. But certainly, we can very easily change the ordinance however you all want.
Well, if they're buying it, but they can use it interchangeably, it really doesn't make sense to have... To be inconsistent. So, does it?
I can't argue with that.
Surely you can. You're a lawyer.
Well, I could.
Does that mean I'm... There. Can I take a little... Well, I'll just... I'll be right back.
I don't think at this point, there's no difference driving to the county versus driving.
I don't either.
You know, it's just going to drive a couple more miles.
So are we at consensus that we're just going to follow the state?
We can take out that last section.
I'd say just go on and take it out. And if the commission wants to add it back in, we can always amend it back in.
I'm... You are too.
Okay.
All right. Next item is garbage collection fee percentage. Public Department Director, Tom Brad.
Actually, we were going to talk about two things to not turn our steering wheel and cut the segment in the interest of town.
I was going to say, we're all... We'll just keep... We'll hold the four down. We'll just hold it in.
Thank you, Derek.
We'll just hold it. Read it back.
Why is it so close? Are we recessed?
No, we were just gonna keep going.
Well, we're seasonal.
We're kinda all the same thing, but we just didn't wanna hold everybody up, so I just keep them, maybe we'll catch up a little more.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, what do we do with that? Are we gonna leave it alone?
We're gonna follow the state, yes, ma'am. Since everybody agreed with it.
Are we talking about garbage now? Garbage?
Collection, collection fee.
Did I give a copy?
Yes, sir.
No comment.
I don't know, it's laying right here. Is that yours?
Yeah, he just gave me one.
I think we can fill the mayor in when he gets back. We were asked to look at some possible solutions to the fact that we're not collecting 100% of the bills sent out for garbage. I'm an engineer, I don't know much about collecting bills, but I did work with Steve Dawson and a few others to come up with this. The city bill's about $290,000 annually, that's in two bills during the year, and they're collecting about 73% of that, which equals $210,000. After a period of non-payment, the city attorney sends a reminder letter to the residents. So, the question that was tasked to us was, come up with some ideas of what we could do to maybe increase that 73% to a larger number. These are just some of the things that, that we thought of were options, not necessarily endorsing any over the other, but these are our options. The first one is to turn the overdue invoices over to the collection agency. We have done that some in the past. We've not had great results, but it does work a little bit. Number two, the thing we could do is, I've got written there, non-payment equals no service. If they've got a can that's larger than the free can and they haven't paid, we just go take that can back and let them find service somewhere else. The residents would have to find their own hauling options. Couple problems with that is, there could be potential health issues with trash piling up and neighborhood complaints. Of course, I think, you know, the ordinance could say that they have to have...
The alternative could be to mix the neighborhood.
It could be. We'd have to work through all that.
Or they might pay it.
Or they might pay, unless they see what it costs for a private agency to come in and collect their trash on a monthly basis. We could move the non-paying customer to the smallest, the free container, the 32-gallon. Go pick up their 64 or 96 that they're not paying for, and give them the small one that's free. We could potentially have to purchase more contain, small containers if we do that. And it could increase the trash that we're getting in recycling, but it also could increase recycling. You know, if you take people who are, normally have a 64, and you give them a 32, and they don't wanna pay for the trash service, then they may recycle more.
Or, they could throw their non-recyclables in the recycling.
Exactly.
That's a problem.
Yeah, it is a problem. The city could look at dropping the fee altogether. The difference, take the difference in the 280,000 that's billed and the $210,000 collected, just take that from the general fund. The problem I see that could come from that is that there are different container sizes out there, and it might, if everybody's paying the same, which is nothing, then people might be jogging to get the bigger container. While we have extra 64s, we don't have a lot of the 96s. And there is even the possibility of dropping the fee and then raising the property tax. For every one cent that it's raised, it generates about $150,000. So, that's a possibility also.
Just raise the property tax on that property, you know?
No, like it would be across the board. We're saying drop the fee altogether.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's one possible solution. The fifth one that we talked about was, just take the non-paying residents and put the names in the state journal, similar to those that don't pay the property taxes.
I like that.
And I think that, we sent a letter once before stating that we were gonna do that, and that helped a little bit.
You got almost like, a couple months ago.
But that wasn't the overall answer. So, these are some things that we can talk about in the future. If you don't have any questions about those, just feel free to contact us, and we can look through positives and negatives of any of those.
Do we ever do like, spot checks where we look in the recycle to make sure people are not just throwing their trash in there? Because I like the idea of taking away, if they're not paying, then they don't get the big can, so they automatically get the little ones. But can they then do spot checks, so they go in there and they look, and if they find trash, they find them?
Well, we wouldn't find them, we just wouldn't pick it, pick it out.
Okay, you'd throw it back on the lawn, maybe.
Well, no, we just leave the whole can, the whole recycling can there.
Okay.
And we tag them, that's what we do now.
Well, I like that idea, if there's a way to check that so that, you know, they're not tempted to just throw it over into the other can.
Right.
They don't get the big can if they're not paying for it.
If, if...
And I like the name in the paper, too.
Okay. Well, those are, you know, things that the commission just needs to direct us to do.
What do y'all think?
I like the name in the paper. I like the not giving them service. And, you know, it's, it's hard for me, like, I'm the one who has this, obviously, we're one, I, I think it's crazy that we're only collecting 73%, and some years less than that, people aren't paying, just like they're not paying a lot of stuff. But it's hard for me because there's certain reasons why the garbage ordinance was passed, the way, the reason why we changed it. I wasn't part of that decision, but one of the thrusts of it was, was to increase recycling. So, if you believe that's a good idea, then, then some of these choices are better than others. So, you know, there's, I don't wanna mess that up, but I, I think that, I think you put people's names in the paper, and hopefully that'll shame them into paying, and then if they don't pay, then I'd take their garbage cans away, and they wouldn't get garbage service.
Can I say something? I'm a little nervous about our database, I'm gonna be honest with you. I don't know if it's, if it's pure and exactly correct, because we've had so many changes in this system, you know, over the past, you know, five or six years. So, you know, I don't mind putting people's name in a paper, I just wanna make sure it's correct before we throw names in there. Then, they're gonna be contacting you guys, and it's gonna get really ugly.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and that's my concern, to be honest with you.
I would say the first thing there is you send...
I'm not making excuses, I was being honest with you.
Before we do anything, we send a letter, and just say, "Hey, our records show that you owe this, and you haven't paid." And they may come in and say, "I don't own that property," if there's a problem with the database.
Yeah.
And then, in that case, we, we correct the problem.
So, you could maybe make it, and it may not be a good idea, but you maybe make it three steps. You, you do that, and then you correct your database, then you put it in the newspaper, and then, of course, you'll find out pretty quick how correct your database is after that. And then, and then you...
Take away the service.
Then you take away the service. There may be better ideas, and I'm fine with it, I'm just for something that, that get, we have a problem with, with people not believing government's legitimate, and they don't pay things. And so, we need to try to enhance the legitimacy of city government.
I like the three-step process.
But now, they're gonna, I, I wanna tell everybody now, if, if you're on board with that, which I'm fine with this, you need to be prepared. Because, because we're not gonna be real popular, except maybe with the people that pay it. Maybe getting tired of paying it and other people not.
Is that required, ordinance change? Can I say one other thing? The two, the two problems that we got with the databases is, we had a lot of can swap outs. We don't know when they swapped out.
Okay.
And we got a lot of folks that have moved and changed the property, and we don't, and we don't have the perfect information coming in when those folks changed, changed out cans of the property. So, those are the two things that we're kinda struggling with, causing the database to be sloppy. And, you know, we're going back, you know, I don't know where we wanna go back to, you know, at what point do we wanna start collecting and just say, "This is bad debt, we're gonna write this off, and from here forward, we're gonna send out letters and try to correct that." Because it's really, you know, when, when you're talking about can swapping out, what, what point did the can swap out? I know Tom's gonna...
Day one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know how good your data, how good your all database is coming up.
Yeah, because if you remember, the first six months of this ordinance, we didn't know what people should be paying, period.
I know.
That was a big problem.
Sure. So, those are kinda some of the struggles that we're dealing with.
One thing that I pointed out, I wanted to point out is that if you do have this three-step process where the service is gonna be discontinued, then we would need to revise the penalty section of the ordinance, because right now, it provides that if you don't pay, then what happened is that, that's considered a civil offense, and a citation is, is issued to what used to be the Board of Code Enforcement, but now it's the Nuisance Board Enforcement with a simple penalty of not less than $50, nor more than $500 assessed for each offense. Now, that has never been used, that, that stick...
So, you're saying it might work?
Well, but, it might work. I will say this, I will say this, that people may pay before they go to, before they have to show up for hearing at that, at the Nuisance Board. They may pay after they appear at the Nuisance Board, but I don't think that the court system is gonna be thrilled, and I don't think that the county attorney is gonna be thrilled with having to enforce...
There's gonna be 4,500 households under 30% threshold. Is there 15,000 households in the city, or 10,000?
There's 10,000.
So, that you're talking about 3,000 households that aren't paying.
I, I think that's gonna, we would definitely need to talk to the county attorney before we did something like that.
There's only 4,500 right now getting a bill right now.
Okay.
So, it's been, it's been taken down significantly, because a lot of folks aren't, they've got the small can.
Okay, so 1,500.
Yeah, you've got 4,500 people that have got a small, that, they've got a paying can, a bigger than the small can, I'm sorry, the small can doesn't pay.
But whichever, if you're gonna...
Still a big number.
Yeah.
Authorize the termination of service, we would need to revise the ordinance to indicate that.
Okay, so that's all I have on that. We'll just wait for some further instructions from the commission on that.
And one option would be to go ahead to, to notify these people, you know, send them citations, tell them they're gonna appear before the Nuisance Board. That would be one option, instead of having, as part of this process.
Instead of the newspaper?
We could vote.
And then, loss of service if the Nuisance Board owns them.
That could be, you could have fine and loss of service, whatever you wanted to do. But I will say that whatever you do, you don't wanna wait a long time to do it, because, for example, you know, I, I think we've all heard where the city of Detroit did not seek to enforce or collect from people that didn't pay their water bills. And so, finally, after so many years, they said, "Well, you gotta pay your water bill now, or it's cut off." And so, the people whose water bill was cut off complained, complained loudly and wrongly that it was unfair for their water to be cut off after they'd operated for years.
They discovered a new natural right.
In this laissez-faire environment, so you don't wanna wait too long.
I only have one question, that's about the small containers, because I like the idea of reducing it down to that level before you go to none, but also know that we don't have any. So, I'm trying to figure out how much it's gonna cost to, for us to purchase some small, small container. I don't know how big this animal is.
Well, if there's 1,500, we, you know, I...
It's 1,350, Steve just said.
1,350, okay. So, those small containers, of course, anybody can call today and say, "I wanna go to a small container." And, well, we wouldn't do it until January, according to the changes to the ordinance, but changing down to the small container costs probably about $50 or $60 per potential item.
Because we don't have any, we don't have any...
We have a few, we don't, we don't have that number. Okay, so the second thing that we've been asked to talk about tonight has to do with the energy efficiency, and I know we've, we've kinda talked about this a long time. We've worked over the past year to gather this information. This is a, a company called Facility Do, who helps to take all the information and put it together in a format that's kinda easy for us to monitor.
Look at my glasses, it wasn't what yours are.
Yeah, he's, he's trying to focus a little bit. So, so what happens is, we take, when the utility bills come into the city, the different departments pay, pay their bill. And so, there's not a good picture of what the city as a whole is spending on energy. And so, what, what this program does is, allows us to take the plant board bills for water and electric, and Columbia Gas bills for natural gas, and put them in such a way that we can tell, get a history. And we've got a two-years' history with a small gap, we're still working with the plant board to fill that small gap. So, we have about two-years' worth of history in here, and we can get down to individual buildings or individual meters. And so, one of the things that, that we'll use this to monitor is changes that we make, say for City Hall, we changed that, the roof and put in extra insulation. We, we see a drop in the energy usage, or we change out the lights. And so, we can track things historically, and when we make a change in a building, we can go back and see if those changes are having an energy-efficient effect, and if it's not, then we should try something else, or, or not try that in other buildings. The other thing that's really good about this is it gives us the opportunity to, to see things that are spikes that are abnormal. And Derek worked very hard on this and put all this information together. One of the things that he did is he went back looking at the history, and it was, what, two-years ago in the EOC, he noticed that there was a, a big spike in the water usage. And so, he went and talked to Andy and found out that they had had a water leak two-years ago in the EOC. And so, this program had, you know, if it had it back then, they might have caught it sooner, or they released note. We can use, we monitor parks as well, so we know if, if they have a big spike in the water usage that's comparatively more than last year or the year before, that they may have a leak somewhere. And so, we're hoping that that will help us to find, is that it, right there?
Yeah, speaking of what Tom was talking about a second ago, what we're looking at is water bills, monthly water and sewer supply bills for the EOC. Part of what this program will do, this kinda backup step, this takes for the laundry list of buildings that you can see, broken into the category, along the left and right. It can take the monthly invoices coming from the plant board, from the Kentucky Utilities, from the natural gas, Columbia gas, and input them in, in sort of a monthly tracking period. It normalizes, can normalize the data out across, that is, to take the average temperature, any kind of variance fluctuations in there that would be anomalies, and standardize them so that you can actually see a trending in usage for particular buildings. This building, for example, goes back all the way to 2010. We do still have a break, almost uniformly, between February 2013 and February 2014. We're working with the plant board right now to get that data in. And it's actually kinda represented by wherever one of the orange lines, well, the orange line drops off at one point right here, and disappears until it picks up the blue line back in February, that's the busting of data. But as you can see, it all generally sort of trends, the usage month to month. What I saw in reviewing this is, that back in 2011, there were a couple of months that spiked and got out of the, the target range that we were looking for. As Tom mentioned ahead, we had the program, and what this program will allow us to do in the future is to catch these kinda spikes. What these two points represent is, basically, it was three... What these two points represent is, basically, almost three months' worth of a floater valve in the, or now it was, the EOC's cooling tower was stuck. So a vision like the, the flooding valve in your toilet tank, it gets slugged, your toilet runs constantly, so it's constantly refilling, and now multiply it by tens and tens of thousands of gallons, as you can see, almost 100,000 gallons in, in one month. That's a considerable cost. Had we been able to monitor it to this level of time, we might have been able to catch it and make repairs quicker and avoid a cost like that. And it doesn't spit out any kind of, we'll say intelligent information, it doesn't flash warnings, and a big red light in my office goes off and says we've got a problem, but we, by monitoring this at a month-to-month level, we can see what's, what the trending is going on with the bills. Another good one that we hope to be able to derive out of this is using the City Hall building, for example. It has had, this is again, the electric bills for City Hall, got the break, it goes between this bottom dot line and the blue line, or at one point, but again, you can kind of see the trending of, of the usage. We've got the same general number of people, the same relative heat in the summer or cold in winter, because we normalized it. Coming in here, you can see a, a decreasing trend year to year. So you've got a 2010 year, you've got 2011 year, you've got 2012 year, you've got 2013 year, and 2014 year, and each year, it's sort of peering down less and less that we've been spending here, although that's us, the public works and somebody's putting in the roof, the upgraded lights in certain parts of the building, and you can actually see a, a generalized cost savings. That's not telling you exactly how much money you're saving, but you can see the trend works. So we can apply that over different buildings across the city. We know this works because it uses less power, with the same hundred people and the same homeowners, I think. This is, this is some, not necessarily low-hanging fruit, but maybe mid-hanging fruit, that we can attack different buildings with and save a lot of money off. What we would want, I want to say is that today is, and this is after the mission chamber had its installation updated in that, the finance, where they had all the work done up there, and a lot more of the lights that were put in, we wouldn't want to see, or would be surprised to find that this number spiked or rose. And again, that's something we can monitor month to month as the bills come in. Kind of lastly, we can sort of see an overview of where to target what, this is, so those were specific, specific buildings, specific bills. This is a generalization of the entire city. As far as utility bills goes, what do we spend where? And the biggest bite that comes out of the pocket every month, annually, is the electric bill. I might have thought it might have been distributed differently, a gas bill, especially after the, the bad winter that we had this past year. It's only been 10% on, on average annual. Water and sewer come in at, you know, 9%, here they go, it's 10%. Natural gas is 10%, electricity is the largest. So again, we can target those as, as features, coming up with a more efficient-
So not all sewers in there, though, right? Not all sewers?
Not all sewer, any of that. Some of, some of the bills, and I think it sort of translates from a conversation we had earlier in this meeting, but some of the, some of the places are monitored, pay a sewer bill, some of the parks locations do, but don't necessarily have a sewer bill, it's tagged on as a bill, but doesn't have sewer intention. So we didn't, we didn't track them all, or try and track only the ones like occupied office buildings that have a water and sewer.
So do you have, is the, do you all have some pl-, buildings that are run on electric heat?
Uh, the EOC universally runs on electric.
That's right.
I don't think it has any gas in it.
Okay, that's why, that's why the gas is so low.
Yes, sir.
Correct. About the whole building, or just those?
I, I was talking to Andy earlier today, he said there was no gas in the-
There's no gas in the public station.
Okay.
I figured there couldn't be, if that was the guy.
Yes, sir.
What's, what's, what kind of heat is the, is that building on water high and used on, is it the, where they train over there?
Bridge Street?
Yeah, what kind of heat's that run on?
It will have natural gas to be fine. So the program itself has got, as you can see, lots of different tabs and bells and whistles that it goes through, it goes from month-to-month billing to sort of the monthly trends that we're looking at a minute ago.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So this is what we've started with, this is just the beginning, of looking at what we can do to make changes facility-wise for energy efficiency ourselves, without bringing in a third-party company, that we change out these lights, and then they take the savings over the next 10 years. This is something that we can monitor and see that these changes that we make ourselves can track, you know, the benefits of that, at the same time of checking and seeing if there's a problem somewhere along the way.
Correct me if I'm wrong, prior to this, I don't think I see all the bills for any kind of a payment function, but prior to this, every department, in some degree even divisions they're in, received their own utility bills, signed off on them, sent them to finance, and they sort of went through one gatekeeper to pay, but nobody saw what the city was doing universally.
That's my understanding, you're correct. Do you all have any questions on this? I know, I, does anybody besides Commissioner Roach have any question?
Yeah.
Incidentally, can we ask the sewer board to pay us back?
I was going to ask you that.
Yeah, it was a relief for the sewer-
That was one of my questions, actually. I hope we didn't have to pay any sewer on that.
I'd have to go, I'd have to research-
Should have got our money back.
I'd have to research that, plant board.
But, I knew that was your answer. Kind of like that swimming pool. I guess, one, I think this is great, I appreciate all the data you inputted, I know that's a Herculean task. What, have we started to monitor buildings that get infrequent use, or not very much use, and put electronic thermostats in them, or some sort of programmable thing, so that, for example, if it's a building that's not used much, we've got the air conditioner on 80, if they're only in there once every couple of weeks, or, in other words, ways that we can, because where, where you spend your money is water, sewer, and heating, and air conditioning. The rest of this stuff doesn't take as much energy.
Yeah, that pretty much covers it. We have, we have some programmable thermostats, but we don't monitor them as far as in the buildings where we know that there's low occupancy. We haven't begun that yet, but that's something that we'll start doing. Putting lights on motion sensors is another thing that usually is, saves a lot of energy. So-
Because there's a lot, I'd say there's a lot of money there.
There is. There is money there, I don't, you know, I would think, with lights in buildings that aren't occupied most of the day. One of the things that we did over at Streets is, in the garage where they have the snowplows, we changed out all those lights to a more energy-efficient light that comes on quicker, because what they were doing was, when they were coming at night to snowplow, they would turn on the lights, and it would take 10 minutes for them to come on. Well, they'd leave them on and go out to plow, because when they came back in, they didn't have to wait for them to come up on again. So now with these new lights, they can turn them off, go do what they need to do when they come back, turn them back on. And that's going to save, you know, and that should show up in this eventually.
Particularly, when we're looking, and apologize, it's kind of hard to see at the bottom, this is sort of a dashboard that shows you big-ticket items, high altitude. Something we came to are sort of the 10 largest costs across the city, expectantly, and I don't mean this disrespect, but expectantly, wastewater treatment plans are going to be big heavy hitters. Treating sanitary waste is a, is a huge process, takes an enormous amount of energy to do it. And so there are several of the, of the ones up there. What we kept, what we saw, and we're actually kind of surprised about, was that the street lights across town were a couple of the larger costs involved with it. Tom and I have discussed in-house the possibility of going to localize LEDs, talk with the plant board about doing more fishing, uh, light that's involved. It may bring two of these down a lot faster, a lot of times with the street lights, the plant board will take one or two as templates, and then do a multiplier, to about 500 light this across town. Well, maybe that's accurate, maybe it's not, and if we maneuver ourselves into using more fish lighting in those locations, perhaps we'll see a-
Particularly if you can find the ones that use the multiplier a little bit.
I said two, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just trying those two.
There you go.
That's it, I said the same thing. But like I said, Abby, answering your questions, it's got a ton of data in it, I may not know it all, I may make some of it up, but Abby, answering your specific questions you may have.
Any questions, have any other questions?
One last one. What, I think the only question I have left is the process by which we start attacking these problems and timeline and that kind of thing. Because this is, this took forever, I know, you know, this data, because I, I asked y'all about it enough. So what's the process or the way to attack it, and how long do you think it will take? It's probably something we'll do forever.
I think so. I think if, if you want to, if you want to attack it aggressively, you're going to have to have someone who bets their job is to attack it aggressively, and you're going to have to have some money to spend. I think maybe the answer for now is, as we repair, as we renew, that we make sure that we use things that we have proven in the past that have worked. We're going to do lights over on the other half of the hallway here, we want to use these lights because we know these work, and that they're energy efficient. Anybody will tell you whatever they sell is energy efficient, but, but, you know, the proof is in, if your bill goes down. If we was, if we were to put in lights that were supposed to be energy efficient, and the bill didn't go down, we would look for a different type of light than we do in the next building. So I think it's a little bit longer-term process, but I think overall, I think we'll end up with a better product, and not be chasing after products that say they're energy efficient, maybe-
So at this time, you think we need an employee or not?
Depends on how aggressively you want to go after it.
Well, I was asking, what's your judgment, you think?
My judgment would always be lean to no, but if we get to a point where we need it, then I'll, I'll say yes. We looked at, I know when the, when the commission talked about two years ago, or a year and a half ago, about a sustainability coordinator, nobody really knew that if the savings were there, because we really didn't know what we were spending as a total. You do the city as a whole, what's the, what's the dollar?
I think you have to look at things that are feasible to fix and things that aren't.
While you're looking, I would like to comment on your graph, because you went from the ascending to descending percentage, and I always like it when people do graphs that way, so it's... Those of us that have had quantitative methods or statistics, always appreciate when people put those types, small thing, small thing, but you got big points for it.
Maybe the first answer is to look at what we're spending as a total, and I think it's right at a million annually.
Yeah.
I think it's right at the median range. So if you think we could get 10%, by going very aggressive with someone, then, you know, that's $100,000 a year, but you also have to buy the lights and the insulation and all that.
You have to have a, you have to have a, you have to figure out how many years it takes you to rebuild your park.
Right.
So I think you're right, it makes sense to not, to continue what you all are doing and see where we go with it before we do anything else.
Yeah, I think, someone told me that kind of does, in the business of, of energy efficiency is, you know, what some of the low-hanging fruit is, and, and we're trying to attack that. And so, the lights, the thermostats, you know, programmable thermostats, but then you also have, you know, the heaters under the desk, that you're hard to control, but that's a huge energy.
They take a lot.
And they take a lot of energy, and, and sometimes I wonder if it's better to turn up the heat and-
Not, because then we would have refrigerators under the desk.
Well, they'd be my add-on, but-
The two we targeted in the department really was the under-the-desk space heaters, and turning off computers at the end of the day, universal, kind of a mandate, at the end of the day, you've got to do this. We didn't push data like Jolson and the IT department does overnight, so it was a different, different time period. But if they knew there were going to be a specified day of the month, that they were going to push up to eight or two days in a month, the rest of the time, we could shut down the computers, but there was some savings. There, there is still some low-hanging fruit that exists, it's just sort of the prioritization of how and who attacks it.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know, it's not Susan Condon, but she's like-
I know. We answered one of her questions, I think.
It's just common, and I, believe me, I'm all incentive-y with, you all saving everything that you can, regardless of how you save it, but I do need to point out, the lights in the council chamber have been on ever since I got here, and there's not sold in there, and hasn't been since I got here.
Somebody go flip those in.
So it's kind of like physician heal thyself, somebody go over and turn the lights off.
That'd be you, Chief. I'll go do it.
I'm serious, they're, they've been burning, and cheese in that room.
I will say, I came down and looked at stuff in the office this weekend, and everything was, it was all when I came in. I'm not saying that, but I did, I noticed everything was, there was no hallway lights on or anything, and it was, uh-
And why do you have all those outside lights? Chiefs? Chiefs? All the outside lights over there, the police department?
Well, let's, we'll do a whole, we'll look at all of those.
But this is, are all those lights on the exterior absolutely necessary?
Well, we'll, we'll get those questions later, if you want. Will it, I guess you guys will be the ones checking on it? Hey, volunteer there. Okay, thanks. Okay, we've, we've done all of this. Okay. Discussion, anybody have any, she's on the tentative agenda.
I know, it's one question, and wouldn't be a good time, I guess I can just go to the department, if I have a question with sewer, I can just go to the sewer department prior to, I just need some understanding on one thing, because it's on the consent agenda.
Just email me tomorrow, if you will.
We can get together, I'll see you.
And so, there will not be older new business on the agenda, right? That's correct?
Unless you have a specific item to include.
Well, I mean, it has to be put on there, like Wednesday or something?
Well, I'll make sure that, because of my best, because of the change in special meeting, you know, especially-
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get all the things I should have gotten, but it was a quick day, on Wednesday.
What time is Wednesday?
Noon? What was the question?
He wants to know what time Wednesday, um, any items to be added.
It needs to be by Tuesday. My deadlines are always noon on Tuesday.
I know, but we have a meeting week from today that we changed, and-
That's tomorrow.
See how that's possible to do.
It really, I know, and that puts a whole, a real crunch on all of us to fit within that short window. I would say close the business in tomorrow, because they go out, I mean, you all receive them on Wednesday, so in order to get it together, you know.
Okay.
That's what happens when you have the meeting right after, one of the week right after the other one.
Yes.
Which we used to do, that's why we changed, because it was pretty much-
If you know it, if you're, if you're, you know-
Okay. No agenda items for discussion then. Can we make the staff reports quickly?
CLG grant on store preservation guidelines, we received a contract today. Gary has talked to the Heritage Council, and they would like to answer whether we want it or not by the night of September. So he's thinking about it, I guess, to discuss it on the next work session.
Well, we don't have time to-
The night of September, we'd have to do it next week.
Be the eighth, would be the work session, would it, Rebecca? Ever take a day?
So we have to do it tomorrow night?
I think we need to put it on the agenda for a week from today, don't we?
Yes.
Well, with this Labor Day-
New business?
-that will affect the meeting.
Oh.
Eighth is a Monday.
The first.
The first is a Monday.
Okay, so would be the eighth, the eighth would be your work session.
I think it'd be, we have to talk about it on this-
Old business?
September eight, or August 18th, shouldn't we?
Yep.
Just to clarify, we put in the grant document that the mayor has the ability to, to sign all grant-related documents, so I don't think we need an action from you all, but a formal vote. We just need to, you want it, you got it?
We need what?
Do you want, do you-
A direction.
I don't want it. I don't want it. If it's the one I'm thinking of, is it the one I'm thinking of, Gary?
Y'all read each other's minds.
We met for an hour on historic regulations, so that's why he knew what I was thinking.
But y'all got this thing.
Not that far.
Excesses.
But I think we all put it on the next meeting, so we can talk about it.
We just put it on the agenda for the last-
Old business discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
For the 18th.
Yes, ma'am.
Emergency management, Mr. Russell. Sewer, Mr. Peterson. HR, Mr. Fields.
Two items I'd like to request permission to add to the agenda for Monday. Both are requesting the mayor's signature. One is our vision insurance. We are the, 2015 will be the third year of a four-year rate lock, so it's a rate lock, there's no change in pricing. This would be just saying we agree to that rate lock in year number three. So, that's a signature item. The other is our life insurance. It's our only benefit that is not on a calendar year cycle, so this document would request that we move our life insurance from an August through July rotation to a calendar year rotation, and that would give us five extra months at the same pricing. Those are the two items I'm requesting permission to add to the agenda.
Is there an objection?
No, sir.
Thank you. Chief Lo?
Slight permission to add a linkage agreement with Central Baptist Oncology. It's just a signature type thing, there's no money involved. Basically says we'll come to their facility and pick up patients that call for an ambulance.
You?
I'd like to add a ZOMAP amendment, first reading, public hearing for the state property in the Sauer Boulevard. The pine commission meets this Thursday. The law will say, they'll table it, I might have that on. You can try to explain this.
Any objection with that?
City clerk?
A couple of things. One is, I just want to let you all know that I have been in discussions with CSX concerning the rail trail. I've actually got an email today, despite the fact that we've sent them to them several times, we have sent them once again, a map of the area that we wanted to, to be acquired for purposes of the rail trail. So, now we're being asked for more specific information concerning the width of the rail trail, and so I just need to get with Jim Parish and Rebecca Hall, but I did want to let you know that we've been in discussions with, with CSX. They've been much more responsive now that they've got a new person in place. Second thing is, I don't know if there are going to be any questions about 108 Sequoia and what we're doing to address that situation, but that was, that home was delinquent in property taxes, so it's one that foreclosure action has been filed against, and there's property tax as well as property maintenance code leads. And then, third is, and I don't know whether or not you all will want to discuss this tonight or not, but there was a discussion at a recent staff meeting. Staff would like to request authority to have the city manager sign contracts of $20,000 or less, or have the mayor be able to sign those without them having to come before the commission ahead of time and more or less report to the commission on a report basis. Right now, I believe that our, our purchasing procedures authorize department heads and/or the city manager to issue POs for items up to $20,000. And so, you know, if someone wants to bypass the requirement to have a written contract, they can just go with a PO. So, you know, the thought was, why not make our requirement for authorization to have the mayor sign a contract be consistent with our purchasing procedures with respect to POs? And maybe what I need to do is just provide that to you in writing for you all to consider, and then perhaps discuss it if there are questions about it at the next work session.
Do we have any idea of how many 20, less than $20,000 we do a year?
It's a lot.
I think about two.
I would say there's a, there's a fair amount of them. I don't know the exact number.
I wouldn't have figured that.
Right. But I, you know, there, I would say probably on each consent agenda, there's at least a couple that-
So, this basically would give the city manager the ability to go ahead and get it done?
Correct.
And I have to sign it too, right?
Please.
Would I have to sign it too? Because I would like to say, if we're going to do that, I would just prefer to, before I send anything, that the commission's aware of any kind of spending thing.
Well, if that-
They don't have to vote, or just put it down? I mean, we, and they would get, they would get copies anyway, right?
Right. They would just, it would just be provided on more or less a report format, where at the end of each month, instead of having to seek authorization to enter into a contract, we would, the city commission would just be provided with a report indicating the contracts that had been entered into for amounts, $20,000 or less.
You could put it in a spreadsheet update.
One way you could do it. Could you write, it sounds like a good idea, but if you could write it up, that would be good for me.
I'll write it up and dra, and prepare a draft order for you all to look at.
Sounds like a good idea.
When did it change?
Do you remember what year that changed?
You know, I-
It's been a while.
I don't know.
I think Commissioner Devall is on the commission.
Commissioner Devall?
On the commission, we changed it.
We didn't start doing the consent agenda until I was here, like in early-
But this is just, he's talking about the small things, the low $20,000.
Right. I just know that due to the, due to the language of 83A150, I've always taken the position, and it's a conservative position, that the mayor has to sign all written agreements, and I think that's just safer. But, you know, if you're talking about minimal amounts, and that report's going to be provided to you all anyway, then-
You're probably covered.
You're probably covered.
Just so everybody knows, I mean, because, just make sure everybody knows everything they're putting out, so they can review it. I mean, something might get, need to get done on a quick basis for whatever reason, and then the commission can always look back, "Yeah, didn't really like that." I mean, there are checks and balances, just making sure we've got checks and balances.
Can you add anything further?
Thank you.
Ms. Newman? City clerk?
Just get things to me by tomorrow.
One last thing, you all got your invitations for the public ribbon cutting tomorrow morning, 10:00 AM, down on Lawrenceburg Road, B, baseball, B-E-E-P, with the Bureau of the Blind and for wounded mortars and visually impaired people, a facility right next to the Rob Moore, or Ben Moore, excuse me, tennis courts. The Ben Moore Tennis Courts at 10:00 AM, and fittingly so, the Lexington Legends, one of their representatives, the MC's name is Ty Cobb. Andy Morrow will be there speaking, and ESPN E60 will be here filming National.
Thank you. Mr. Bradley?
I would like to add, if I could, we opened bids today on a gorgeous track. This year it's in the budget. I'd like to add it to Monday's agenda.
Any objections?
Chief Lo?
That was pretty good.
Last month, I asked the commission their desire regarding the request for price for the financial advisor and the bond council contracts for the Aquatic Center. I didn't really feel like I got a strong sense of what direction it wanted to go, and I would like to say, based on my experience, I've been here eight years, we've used, we've used the same financial advisor and the same bond council for those eight years, and, you know, you develop a relationship with folks, and tonight, I'd like to recommend we just stay with the same, with the same firm for both of those. And my reasoning is, because, you know, we have, they have a very good understanding of our business, and I work with those folks probably once a year. For example, a lot of times, we'll do a cash flow analysis of sewer, sewer situation and all these projects. They're very aware of all that stuff. In fact, I asked a financial advisor to come in this fall and do a price analysis on our, on our rate, a rate study for the sewer, to make sure our rates are in line, and make sure we're able to cover our debt. So, that's why I would like to recommend that we stay with the same firms that we're using right now, because they do have a good understanding of our projects, and they do, they've done a good job, we've not had any problems with those firms. So, that would be my request here, if you're asking.
We didn't get something else. Forgot.
So, we talked about in July, the commission decided to hold off on a final decision, because we didn't have one commissioner here.
And you've only got three, because this is my business partner, so I have to recuse myself from talking about it.
Did we get bids on it?
We didn't go out, because no decision was made in the July work session.
I just, I was kind of asking.
I just wanted, I just thought it would be good just to take a look at it, to see what other people could, could offer, bring to the table. That, that's why I put it out there now, I don't know how the others feel, and I certainly understand what the finance director said.
Is there anything that's going to be damaged by the delay? Do we have any?
I mean, we're kind of pushed back a little bit here, but I don't see-
And I want to say too, I have no problem with it, I just, that was a question that had several folks ask us, I think, and I put them in touch with the city manager.
And we've got several phone calls.
You talked to her, so I just said, I will pass it along with the commission, and you met with two or three. So, that's, that's what I wanted to do, just to put it out, and I promised I would.
I don't have a problem with using somebody we've used in the past, we not have a problem with them. So, I guess I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding this. We delaying it for what reason? Because we didn't have one of the commissioners here one time?
Yes. We talked about, Steve brought this up under his report at the July work session, and Commissioner Henn then was not here, and there was some discussion, and the thought was, well, wait, let's wait till we have all five commissioners. So, no decision has been made.
There's nothing in the minutes, I'll, I'll, I'll repeat that. If there was anything, there wasn't anything.
Coincidentally, tonight, we're-
Same though.
Sorry, what?
Are you, we're not getting any comments, so we stay as we are, consultant, non-council. Thank you.
Oh, no, you're welcome. Thank you for meeting with folks. Okay. Old business. Do you have any, do you think I have any old or new business?
I just have business. I have common business.
I have a whole plan to decide, because I've been around, I've been-
I don't have any business, but-
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Henn is not here, but, you know, she was the commissioner that was all about doing employee day or something up at the park. Are we going to do that? I think that'd be nice to do in September.
You should give a-
They did one yesterday for our university, and I heard it was really, really nice, and we got that brand new gazebo up there. Maybe something in September, just good weather day.
My gym didn't have it, but, seeing as we had an item that-
That's only to present to everybody's interest, of course.
I'll talk it out at an extent.
Let's not force it. But I was hearing comments about the one they had yesterday, that the employees really enjoyed it, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize, because I have, my agenda does not reflect general business requests for property tax waivers by Mr. Ed. This is-
I gotta take, I did the only thing on mine. That was one of my questions.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for being with us. We have this request that you asked for, or if you won't see-
It was just sort of asking for, I think we've been instructed that the commission would need to consider an ordinance in order to forgive back taxes on properties in the situation where condemned properties or abandoned properties have been donated and are going to be put in hands to be rehabilitated. So, I wanted to ask the council, or the commission, if they would consider some sort of ordinance to do, to do that, trying to kind of pave the way so that we can, we can make something-
To create an ordinance to forgive back taxes when the property's been obtained to rehab, right? What?
I think what it's getting at, if someone has a piece of property that has a lot of back taxes on it-
Right.
-and they want to sell that-
And they've obtained it to-
Somebody that wants to rehab it, and has the means to rehab it, that's, is that-
Do we have to have an ordinance? Do we have to have an ordinance to do that?
How much money is it? I've read your letter, but I still don't know how much it is.
Six hundred and forty-eight dollars, I think, for each property.
The total, what's the total amount?
Probably thirteen hundred.
And that's for both buildings?
Mm-hmm. We're just trying to make sure that the people who eventually end up with them can put the most money into working on themselves.
So, what happened in the process?
How?
In other words, the, yeah, why did, why didn't they pay the tax? The Bookers, I guess, who owned the-
Steve, Mr. Booker owned both of these and about eleven others. He passed away, the family estate was trying to figure out what to do with them. In the meantime, taxes weren't paid, they were deemed abandoned during that time, and then were close to demolition, we stepped in, and the families donated the properties to the nonprofit, and then we're putting those into the hands of people to rehabilitate them.
So, now you're closing it in such a way that the taxes have to be paid?
Yes. So, we just, we don't want to incur that cost through the nonprofit, and we'd rather try to put as much money back into rehab-
So, the new owner can't pay it?
They could.
Okay.
Any thoughts on, I don't know if the city associate wants to offer any input on that, as of current?
It makes me nervous to draft an ordinance that starts making exceptions to the payment of property taxes.
I concur with the city attorney, I think they need to pay it, because everybody else was going to want to come up here and say, we're not paying our taxes. And I appreciate that y'all are doing this, because it's going to help the community, but I think that's too slippery of a slope.
I agree.
Just wanted to add that, we appreciate-
I haven't asked, I'm required.
I don't blame you.
We appreciate what you, what you all do.
Yeah.
Okay, next. Commissioners, have any, just chance on business, they announced any old business?
Well, I have old business, but I have a question first. Something's dated July the 30th, does that make it old business?
No. No, it's not, it just, they have managed to end it last-
This is the request, you know.
On June 30th, the housing authority, they leave the taxes.
The payment of taxes, okay. I think their commission, the staff was going to add that to the agenda.
Were we going to do that in September? Ramona and I talked a little bit about it, that was going to be on the September agenda.
I think so.
And I think we were going to handle it as it was handled last year, it's my understanding, and it's been done several years in a row, and we are looking at how it was processed.
I just wanted, I didn't want to throw this away until we took action.
I think he's one of ours.
Is that letter requesting to forgive the payment and leave taxes? They were making a payment and leave taxes now?
I don't think they've ever-
No, they haven't.
That's because I've been here, I've been here.
All right. It was the same as previous years.
Okay.
Yes, I would ask that, you know, I brought up boats at the last meeting, and I would ask that the city manager meet with appropriate people on boats to see if there are possible cost savings and consolidations. If y'all are all right with that.
Any objections? All right. Any other old business? New business?
Children.
Taboo children?
I know, so I'm thinking.